Catch, sort of an agenda item. Nick, I'm sorry, we were going to move the science department and one of the science teachers is coaching wrestling and I would ask that we move the science presentation to the next item after Mr. Pearl walks in the door.
Okay.
I don't know what number that is on our agenda, but that's the number we want.
Seven point one.
Right.
All right, just pull work seven point one in up. Okay, I make a motion to move up six point three, ten point three, and we'll work in seven point one when all the teachers are here.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor, say, kind of saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, so we will start with six point three, land sale discussion, third street lot, and school forest.
If I could just give a little bit of background for the board. So when this lot was cleared next door, there were several other municipality municipal entities who asked for it. It is kind of a hotly contested piece of green space in the city where there is otherwise none. As Mr. Cooper included in his materials, it's technically five lots, but they are currently all owned by the district. So the board at that time decided they wanted to hold onto it should there ever be a need by the district to use it, and then it has not been talked about in probably seven years. So it's been, this kind of makes me think about the conversation we had our last special meeting. When we say the board, it is not just the seven elected officials now, it is all of the officials who were elected to previous boards before you. Those boards took action and now it is yours to decide what to do with. So I just wanted you to know that. Before we talk about the school forest, I've reached out to our attorney who helped with the quit plain deeds when we became the owners of all four parcels in the school forest, and she is still, she had not And she is still... She had not gotten back to me before the beginning of the meeting. I am uncertain if that land, the reserves on the rights to the land for us, I'm not certain that we can sell it. So we can engage in all the conversation and listen to all of Mr. Cooper's explanation. And no, I am not positive whether we can sell that or not, but that is an easily answered question after the fact. So with all of that, I gave you all the materials that Mr. Cooper shared with Brandon and I and leave it up to you to... Sure.
Awesome, thank you. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Tom Cooper. Tonight I'm appearing to you as a citizen of the town of Adams. Most of you may or may not know, I do also sit on the Jackson County Board of Supervisors and I sit on the Economic Development Committee. But I'm not here to represent Jackson County or any of its official positions on anything, just to share my thoughts with you. So the package that you have in front of you, Shelley did a great job, you can see it right in front of you, is that we have the five, we have five lots out here. And based off of really calculations, if we break those, broke those five lots down and sell them as residential property. Now Shelley has indicated that there's been a number of people, other entities, non-taxing entities, that of course want that property and that is a topic of discussion that has occurred before this board before, which was shut down because nobody wants a fire truck blaring out in the middle of the night right across from their house. So I get that and understand it, but we, it is nestled into a wreck, is in a residential neighborhood. Currently, it's a liability to the school district, it's not of a benefit to the school district. There are no plans to do anything with it, to my knowledge. So we, the exposures that we have onto is we have maintenance costs, we have injury costs, we have playground equipment out there that neighborhood kids or other children will come and play on. Should they get, fall and get hurt, they will always go after where the deepest pockets are. So my recommendation to the board is that those five lots be broken into five lots. Right now they're one piece of property owned by the school district. So we would incur cost to have a surveyor come and break those into five lots. I also am proposing that the forty acre parcel, parcel down at, off from Castle Mount Road, which is known as the school forest, that we also research the sale of that property. And when we think about the school forest and what we use the school forest for, is we use the school for outdoor sciences. Okay, so we want to protect our outdoor sciences and everything to better educate kids interested in those fields. But by eliminating this property, we eliminate liability risk to the school district. And if we partner with the Wisconsin DNR, to with the LEAF program, it will allow outdoors, outdoor sciences to have about sixty-eight thousand acres plus free educators from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. So you got the fish people, you got the elk people, you got the land people and the tree people and the bug people. And, and that is, would be of no cost to the school district for that type of education. There, in addition, there are additional grants available for even busing the kids out to certain locations through the DNR, which further reduces the school cost and improves the facilities that the kids would be learning in versus something that we're just hanging on to out in, out in Brockway and listening to some people tell you whether you have to have a gate or not. I won't get into that for you, but my early projections are, is that the school district would have about a $415,000 one-time income that, that could possibly come into the school district. That could be used for debt reduction or whatever, whatever the board desires to use that for. After that, we are looking at the school districts portion of being somewhere above $8,000 a year, just here in town. And if we had to split the two Brockway lots, the forty acres, split it into two twenties, we would be able to get those back on the tax roll as well. The one thing that I want you to keep in mind is that, yes, the school district owns it, but it's not the only taxing entity that depends on it. So in this case, with the, with the lots just north of this building, the city of Black River Falls depends on it, WWTC depends on it, Jackson County depends on it for revenue. Where we're getting it, getting ourselves into trouble is we're holding on to too much property throughout the entire state, or in the, the entire county. Roughly a third of Jackson County right now is, is not taxable property. So whether that be the interstate system or whether it be school districts or, or the counties. I mean, Jackson County, or the Black River Falls School District compares really well. Maryland Elma Center has twenty-two point seven acres, Whitehall has sixty-four acres, Land Gods Green Earth, Toma has sixty-three point six eight acres in Jackson County, I don't know. And the Melrose School District has ninety-four point ten. So by breaking this down and getting this back on the tax roll, it really will help make the school district more sustainable. It helps for the housing problem that we have. It potentially is going to help us with daycare support and bringing in further professionals into the community and building a, building a stronger tax base for the, for Jackson County as a whole. Not just the school district, but the entire county. And in closing, I just, you know, I included all the LEAF information for you to look at. I included some information about, at the annual meeting, I'd, I spoke about the PILTS money or payment in lieu of taxes. The school district of Black River Falls does really good on PILTS money because we have one, one township for sure that doesn't carry a levy. So all of their money gets turned over to the county and to the school district and they don't get to retain any of it. But yet they still have to maintain the roads in order to get to the state and county properties. So they're, they're kind of a tough situation because forty-two percent of that township, Towne Comenskey, does not, and they do not have a local town levy. So it's a straight pass-through for them on PILTS dollars. But they're, they're really in tight shape and everybody's getting tighter all the time, Jackson County included. We were able to shave about two million off from our overall operating budget this year. Last year was a little over forty-four million to run the, run Jackson County. And this year Cindy and her team and the, and the county board brought it in a little under, right around forty-two million. So we were able to shave some off. We do believe that we'll be able to do better next year with more solid numbers and more solid reporting. But if any of you have read my lemons, we need more lemon speech. So if you picture tax dollars as a lemon, you can only squeeze so much juice out of an individual lemon before that lemon has no more juice in it. And that's where we're at. So what we need is we need another bowl of lemons so we can pick up another lemon and add to, add to the tax base of the county. Because what we're doing right now is we're, by keeping property off the tax roll, those of us who remain on the tax roll have to pick up the difference. The smaller we get or the more property we take off or keep off the, the tax levy, the harder it is for the rest of us to struggle through. So Shelley, I, I very much appreciate our, our prior conversation with Brandon and New Jel. And, you know, I just, I really think that this is something that the school district should consider and I don't see a downside to it. It'd be one thing if we had plans, shovel-ready plans to build a building here, shovel-ready plans to build behind us. We don't. So we should really get that property back on the tax roll and limit the liability to the school district. So I'm, if anybody needs my email address or anything, you can get that from, from Shelley and ask me any questions you want. My email and my personal phone number is right on Facebook if you want to find me on Facebook and call me and ask me anything you want. And if I don't know the answer, I'll get the answer for you. So thank you all for your time unless you have any questions of me.
I don't know if you're, know more about the LEAF program than I did. I was under the interpretation that the University of Wisconsin system out of Stevens Point ran that and that was specifically designed to help schools utilize their school forests. Like that money is available, those grants are available, that transportation is available without ditching the school forest, which the state of Wisconsin has utilized for a hundred years now.
Sixty-five school districts that I'm aware of, based off of my research, got rid of their school forest property and partnered with the state of Wisconsin. And you are absolutely correct, the LEAF program was developed by the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point, not only to assist school districts with their own property, but to better utilize state resources in providing a collaborative agreement between school districts and the state. They've even drafted the sample MOUs between the school districts and the state of Wisconsin to... I mean, our, our little forty acres has very little on it other than pine trees and poison ivy probably.
There's a lovely pond and there's lots of wildlife.
Yeah.
That is, that is a forest.
That's kind of what a forest is.
Correct.
Pine trees and poison ivy.
Yep, and we can, but we will be able to take kids to sixty-eight thousand acres of specialized outdoor science, doing the same thing and not owning anything. So it would limit your liability exposure, it would limit your hunting risk, it would limit a lot of things and based off of my research, you're only going out there one to two times a year.
Depends on the grade level.
Yeah, and you could, if all these, all these additional state properties are all located within ten miles of the, of the school district, Black River, the center, from the, from the administration office, everything that they would need would be located within ten miles. That would give them a more expansive educational experience because they could go to a fishery and see how that does and see how fish reproduction works. And, and they could go monitor the elk and look at the track, tracking cottlers and the wolf cottlers and, and all of that. And that doesn't cost us any educational staff at all. That's the DNR providing those services to the district, improving their outdoor science experience.
But we can have those programs and the forest.
Yeah, the, the DNR can provide all of those things now, including helping us make better use, which I think is a good idea, and more extensive use of the school forest.
My question to you would be, why? If there's sixty-eight thousand acres available of state property that's not on the tax roll, why do you want to keep that forty, that specific forty acres under the control of the school district with all the liability that comes with it?
We, we actually just like had to go through this as a board. And so what we were finding it very difficult to negotiate was during hunting season, it was a safety issue for the school kids to be able to access that space because now that we have ownership of the space, we're able to set safety parameters for our kids so that, you know, they don't get shot, you know, plus.
We would like to avoid that.
Yeah, yeah. So it actually was more, it would probably be more of a liability for us to send our kids to somewhere where we don't have jurisdiction and they...
You don't have any liability at all if you're on state property? The state of Wisconsin has that liability, not the school district.
So honestly, district liability insurance is rather unique, right? So if it is a school event, we will always have some liability over our kids, right? Whether it's property we own or community property, it doesn't matter because they're on a school-sponsored event, we will always have some responsibility there. That's neither here nor there in the conversation. So we pay liability insurance, absolutely. It's not dramatically impacted by the forest or that site. It is more dramatically impacted by the number of incidents that have happened, right? Somebody falling at the, in the Sam Young Gym on the bleachers, right? That impacts our liability insurance far greater than any of these things. I just would share that we absolutely do rely on the DNR for a lot of our education things that do happen. They're great partners in that work. You're right that it is, everybody that's talked about it is right, that it gets utilized very hot and cold, right? Sometimes we get a group of teachers that's very, very excited about it and they find every opportunity to take their students out there. And then sometimes we get teachers that are less excited and they feel like they lose too much instructional time in the, you know, collaboration to get out there. So all of those things are true. The one thing, we do have a storage shed there, so a lot of our resources stay there so that when different groups come and go, the same resources are there. When we had BRAGs and when we had our charter school, obviously it made a lot more sense because we had kids out there on a much higher interest level. So it has been all over the map. I think most of the board members know that we recently acquired the other three fourths of that acreage. And so now we own all forty acres of the spot. It is a very, there is a very dump there. There was talk about a well. We have been given the seal of satisfaction from the DNR that we are not against any, we are, there's no violations right now about the way that it is being managed right now. So just wanted to clear that piece up because it is a former dump site and there was a well, but that well has now been filled in and, filled in and taken care of.
One of the worst things that Jackson County did was take the Jackson County dump out by the airport by taxi. That was one of, that was one of the worst things they ever did because it cost us millions of dollars to keep that monitored and potentially any contaminants that come out of it is going to be our problem. So that specific dump, we can verify that it is clay-lined and clay-topped and is monitored frequently with the emissions exhaust pipes that are out there for, for methane and all of that stuff. You have no idea what's in the bottom of the dump on the property you own. Zero. If, who knows, they could be dumping fifty-five gallons of green glowy stuff that none of us want to admit exists.
You're not helping us sell this property for good price at the moment.
That's why I'm not a realtor. I just, I, again, I just want to appreciate all of your time, your questions. Anytime that you have any questions for me or at any time, please call.
I just have one question.
Shoot.
Like this property here, like the four parcels or whatever, what do you envision that that could be?
Four houses.
Yeah, okay.
If you, if you break those lots to be smaller than that, you wouldn't, you'd really have a substandard lot and then you get a bunch of tiny homes in there or something limited. I really don't see that location being the central point for a housing complex, like an apartment building complex. I don't know. I, we, we've had some initial inquiries about the Harrison Street campus, about doing some housing complex down there, but it's kind of small for a housing complex. But if you break it into five pieces, I don't think that you're going to have any problem selling those pieces off. And Lollapalooza has sold off another six or eight lots just in the last month. So, and we do have a housing shortage. We are desperate for additional housing, workforce housing and professional housing in our community. It's, it's difficult for us to recruit professionals to come here because where do they live and where do their kids go to daycare if that's applicable? We have all kinds of great amenities with the Linda Center and the walking track and the, and the foundation trail and all of the wonderful things that we have in our community, all big selling points to Jackson County, huge. And we will be, the city of Black River Falls is, is engaging in a relationship with a company called Make My Move. And the Economic Development Committee also has met with them. That is a, is an initiative by the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation where we actually provide financial incentive to get people to move here for a specific reason. But if we do that, we need to have housing for them. You know, there's certain housing that they're going to want to live in and there's certain housing that they're not. And we have a lot more of not versus stuff that people want to move into. So, you know, from a business perspective, an economic growth perspective, we need to improve our housing situation, we need to be able to retain young professionals and do those things. And we are making efforts to do that. But we need to, we need to work on getting some of these ideal prime properties back on the tax roll. This is, this, these five lots out here, full water sewers, high, high-speed internet, everything's right there. So it's not like you have to start with, you know, getting someone to go into debt to put in, in infrastructure into a housing development or something. You don't have to do that here. This one's an easy one. So anyway, I've gone way over my four minutes. Thank you very much for your time.
Or it is, is for public comment, just to be clear.
So, give me a shout if you have any questions.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Any discussion on that board?
As a district administrator, have you found these lots to be overly burdensome cost-wise at the moment?
They're not overly burdensome, no. I will tell you that there's been some conversation about the only green space that's available in town. So if a need should arise or, our secondary campus is very, very, very landlocked. And there's been some fantasy island dreaming about some, moving around of some of those facilities, but nothing concrete.
And how difficult is it acquiring more property close to the other school buildings should we ever need to build something?
The middle school, high school is landlocked. I mean, it would be taking homes and pushing... The middle school, high school is landlocked, I mean, it would be taking homes and pushing out. It is really the only space that exists up there. Um, here, uh, it turns into protected, um-
Wet, wet.
Wetlands, yeah, I was going to say swamp, but you are correct, it's wetlands, not swamp. Um, uh, so at Red Creek, um, if we try to, that spot that is still farmer, um, farmed to the left, there is, uh, protected wetlands that goes right through the middle of that, so that would be prohibitive that way. The hospital is pushing, um, from our, the corner of our lot and the corner of the hospital touch each other in the ravine back there. Um, and we've talked to the hospital a couple of times about some walking pathways and stuff like that, but nothing, um, particularly because we're in a declining enrollment status. I don't know that we have a lot of immediate needs or additional significant spaces. I would say we keep thinking about our alternative ed and where they could live. Um, but I don't know that the middle of a field like that is appropriate for that possibility either.
So, so the property is basically in a holding pattern, because it's the best we're ever going to be able to get?
And, and we own it. Exactly, that's exactly it. We would have never gone out to buy this spot, but we own it, and so we've just retained that, not for any plans.
Thank you, Shelley.
Shelley, it says, uh, one thousand to two thousand dollars for mowing the lawn. We invest that much money?
I, that, those were all Mr. Cooper's rough estimates. Um, I don't know if you've met Chris Williams, he's pretty amazing. He jumps on those machines during the summer, we've got our college kids doing it. I have no idea how much it would cost. If you'd like me to do a study and, um, ask Ken to do some timing and estimates, I am happy to have him, you are curious.
Yeah, we are, we are here to save money unnecessarily, we do not want to invest. And then it says two thousand dollar to clean up the forest if there is tornado or something.
Right, okay, well, there hasn't been a tornado there, so I'm unsure what you're reading off of.
No, it says here.
So if, if those are all Mr. Cooper's documents, I didn't prepare any of those, so he would be better suited to be able to answer your questions about those. But if you're asking me, would it cost us money to clean up from a tornado, that answers yes.
Or any storm, you know, storm, or some, some kind of a nature disaster. Not necessarily tornado, any kind of a nature disaster. We invested approximately two thousand dollar to clean up. And then, if we were to sale, and the county could move just five ha, homes, hopefully one will be woman sheltered. I don't know if they would do it. And then, we, they will collect fifteen hundred dollar tax, we get seven hundred and fifty regardless.
So I just want to be clear on this. Tom is absolutely correct, that putting these lots or the, uh, school forest land back on the tax base, that levy that you approved, uh, that was approved by the board at our annual meeting, that levy is not going to change, that dollar amount is going to be exactly the same. The district still has exactly the same amount of dollars to spend, so that's not new money for us. It's just that that total amount gets divided by more property owners. So his point, that those people who do own their property and are paying taxes in our community, that levy would be shared amongst more people, meaning everyone's slice would get a little smaller on Fantasy Island, or the increases would be less egregious if, if that's the case. So it's not going to increase the spending money. The actual sale of the land, that is one-time money, that would increase our spending. That does not offset by property tax, that would be an actual increase in spending authority for that time that that money exists. I just want to be clear, that increase in taxes, or increase in property base is positive for all property owners, but it does not give the district new dollars to spend.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Thanks. So, um-
We, we talked about a need for potential boiler, right? Um, so if that was to come to fruition, I mean, the, the, the lots is something that we could potentially utilize to bring the income in. Um, but right now, that's not, it's not on the table that that has to happen, so it's just something that can be considered.
Any other commentary?
I think I'm, I need some initial information about projections, and just project plans, and those kinds of things. I'm, I'm going to attend the Economic Development Committee meeting on the third Monday of next month, and just get a feel for kind of where that conversation is, like, going. Um, so I, myself, just like, going to do some research, but I can bring that back in a few months.
So there is no, um, aggressive timeline, there's an ask for us to engage in dialogue. So if you have additional questions as you ponder, I would greatly appreciate you forwarding them, and we can do some digging in the interim and bring things back to you. I would tell you, my opinion is that fifth lot, that right there, where you're like reading my mind, Brandon? I would really struggle with that one, because there are times that we have more people parking out there. And, um, for that to be residential, that would really, um, make this, uh, much, much, much more significantly smaller. Um, I know that it is, um, a nice-to-have, not a must-have, but there, this is used as a park by some kids. And so if we could retain that section that we currently have, um, or at the very least retain some of that for additional parking. Um, I struggle with all five sites, but, um, I remembered who the other person was. When we did the parking lot at the Sheriff's Department, there was that pretty blue house on the corner. You're going to know who owned it, I don't remember.
Durman.
Durman, yeah, they asked us to sell them one of those lots, so that they could move that house up, uh, there. Um, that was a little bit more recently, and the board at that time said that they were not interested in selling it. I knew there was another ask, and that wasn't a governmental entity, but that was a, no, thank you.
How many, how many properties are your, or how many acres are you targeting to try and get back into?
Um, Supervisor Kounis and myself are evaluating this, we've, about how much property is off the tax roll versus the trade-off on going back in. So we paid, uh, three hundred and, for three hundred and twenty acres of expired cranberry marsh, Jackson County paid one million dollars for that piece of property. This twelve hundred acres down in Bear Bluff that they just voted, split vote, but they did vote to purchase this twelve hundred acres, is not going to have a direct fiscal impact on the county, because the nature conservancy is going to cover the, the county's related costs. But in the Knowles Nelsons grant, when we go, it's, it's not necessarily a grant, it's a funding source from the state. Knowles Nelsons is, is coming to an end. But our timber sales right now, we use, that we use to offset our levy, is now going to make those payments on those properties that they purchase. So there may be some logic on why you would purchase property or retain property if you have a plan for it. The expensive marsh that we bought has the equivalent to three point two million dollars in wetland credits that we can use anywhere in the county upon reclamation of that. And there's really not a lot of reclamation to do out there, it's, it's well within the, the, uh, county forestry and parks position to, to do the reclamation on it, so. Um, but we do, we will be working on some type of plan to evaluate sitting land that is, um, that could, that could go back onto the tax roll to do exactly what Shelley says, is to spread that out a little easier, so it's not so hard on all of us, is to get that up, and it's, you know, it's, it's to get the taxing entities to think about that. If you, you know, Shelley said that it's, that, you know, the district isn't going to lose any money with, um, by maintaining those lots, barring something happening. But, um, as far as the revenue coming in for the school district side, it just spreads it out just a little bit more. So instead of the property taxes going up by six or eight percent, it may be only going to go up by two, we don't know.
Four houses are going to change our property taxes by five percent? That's just outrageous to even say something like that in public.
That is, that is absolutely correct, four properties will not change. It will change the dynamics in the city, it's not going to change the dynamics in the county. But four properties are four properties. Now, if I go to the Village of Maryland, or I go to the Village of Maryland, or the Melrose, and they are sitting on four more properties, and both of them to agree to do that, then now we're talking about, how many? Twelve properties. And we have larger tracts of land that can be developed, that we can get back on the tax roll. It's not a one-time answer that the school, that everything, all of this does not rest on your shoulders. It does not. It's to get the taxing entities to not sit on property that they're not using, so the, all of the tax entities can benefit from getting it back on the tax roll. So you are absolutely correct, four houses, is it going to have a significant impact? Nope, nope, it depends on who lives in those houses. Some, some one person in that house might make all the difference in the, on the planet, we don't know that. But we need to make housing available, housing's been identified as a housing shortage in our county. We're in a housing desert, we're in a childcare desert. And all of these small steps will help us achieve an overall goal. It's not the, it's not, and please don't take that wrong, I was, it's not on your shoulders or the school district's shoulders to fix Jackson County's tax woes, it's all of us. We're all of it, we're all in it together. So it's just to get those steps forward. I can assure you that the county is going to take, take steps forward to liquidate county property at some point in time. Um, we're moving forward with discussing how that is going to happen, and what it's going to look like. We aren't going to sell off any significant recreational or significant hunting properties, but we have a lot of twenties and forties all over the, all over the, this side of the river that could easily go back into farming, or housing, or, or whatever. But it would, all of those little pieces build a staircase for us to succeed.
Yeah, um, I guess it's something we can talk about, it's more down the road. I guess I would like to maybe see what the district would actually think they would use this for in like, the next twenty years, if we did retain it. And, uh, this forest, the school forest, if that's even, uh, even on the table of being able to, um, sell it or not, you know, if it's a different option.
I've written it down on future agenda, AM notification.
I would like to put in, if we are going to hear anything about selling off the school forest, which is a one-hundred-year tradition in this state, that is unique to this state just about, I believe. Uh, I would like to hear from the staff that utilized the forest. I would like to hear the history of the forest, I would like to see photographs of how the forest has been used. I would like a full presentation on this thing, before we talk about selling off something that is so unique to this district. We want to talk about people coming into this town, selling off our school's assets, like the school forest, is not a way to make us a more desirable place. It's just not.
We don't know, we don't even know if we can, so maybe it would point anyway.
Correct, but I think it's worth stating that the school district liquidating its assets doesn't make the school district stronger. It doesn't. It makes the school district smaller, weaker, and less desirable for families moving into this school district, which is a serious issue.
We, we also have to pay our debt. Uh, I don't know, what is the debt in the school?
Are you asking me about referendum debts? That's the only debt we have?
No, the interest we pay on our debt, uh, I think for Brent, but that's off the topic.
The only debt we have is referendum debt. And there's, obviously a levy to pay that debt, so. We could accelerate those payments with more money, but.
All right, um, ready, uh, okay, we're on to seven point one.
Mr. Pelletier?
It is my pleasure to introduce the middle school science team. They have some fantastic information to share with you. It's exciting, and, um, I hope you enjoy popping in next time. And they're going to start by introducing themselves, and what they teach, and if they do other things within the district.
Um, Nicole Kounis, I teach eighth grade science, and also eighth grade math. Um, Laura Lindau is our, um, long-term sub that is filling in for sixth grade science this year. Um, she wasn't unable to be here tonight, because she also teaches assignment-based class.
Um, my name's Jacob Rocco, I teach seventh grade science and social studies at Middle School.
Uh, David Brenner, I coach wrestling, which is why I was like, uh, seventh grade science and math.
Uh, Kane Jacobson, I teach sixth grade science and math.
And then John X. Charles Zerio, I teach eighth grade, uh, science and then English.
Who's got our-
Mr. Jar, is your slide person?
Um, we're going to start off with a celebration here, this is our board exam scores from last year. Um, you know, where on the left, Black River Falls is, we outperformed the state by two percent in meeting and advanced. So a big celebration here, um, from our science department, the work that we do.
Is this where you're looking?
Good to go for the next one. Um, some of the work that we've done in order to reach that was, uh, redefining our guaranteed standards. And so our science standards are broken up by three different pieces. The disciplinary core ideas, which is each of our content, physical science, life science, and earth and space. Um, it's also the cross-country concepts, like cause and effect. And then there's another piece called the science and engineering practices, these SEPs. Um, these are the common pieces that we have between grade level, so that when we come to our meetings, we're able to share data and talk about assessments, is, um, looking at each of these pieces.
Yeah, so I guess like as a teacher, I saw new years, my first year, and I guess one of my favorite questions I always get is like, when am I ever going to use this? So one of the favorite things that we do is our project-based assessments, or, in fact, performance-based assessments, right? So these are hand-on assessments that require students to apply their learning. So we had a real-world task, our first one, uh, for harnessing human energy, that was our first one. Our energy and motion was potential energy and kinetic energy. We had to make paper roller coasters, so they could actually see what we were doing. And then right now, in our forces and motion, we're working with a, kind of a simu, a lot of different simulations to well add, so. Like in-person things, such as like, or even the golf ball, the-
And a toilet paper holder, as a launcher.
Yeah, so a lot of different things we're actually doing hands-on, it's usually on the counter.
Um, our second current priority is modeling, so one of our goals with our science PLC is by the end of the first trimester, uh, we will have increased student engagement by twenty percent as measured by student notebook completion. Uh, in my hands right here, I have a couple of our student examples of their modeling. So as you can see with this, this gets them like very hands-on with their learning, and they're very active in the classroom, instead of, you know, maybe just sitting and doing a lot of videos, they are hands-on with their learning and working in teams. Um, so this is something that we're doing to kind of increase that engagement by twenty percent.
And then our last current priority that we're looking at here is science tights. These tights are things that, if you were to walk into one of our classrooms, you should be able to see, not all of these necessarily every day, but at least a fair number of these every day. Things like hands-on activities, uh, whether that's actively working with something like the modeling or, uh, online simulations, um, regular use of those SEPs that we just saw, asking questions, working with math and science, things like that. Students discussing it, the science that we're learning with each other, not just us teachers, telling them what's going on, but them discussing and bouncing ideas off each other. Uh, bell ringers to start the class, focus on those SEPs, modeling us, modeling the skill that the students need to learn, so that they understand exactly what we're looking for. And then, at the end of class, reflecting on what they learned, either individually or with each other, uh, so that them and then us can see where we're at.
And so for this performance-based assessment, we really have, um, tried to focus on this, because we have noticed engagement has been down, and there's been studies that show, you know, performance and project-based learning does increase engagement. And so we've been really working closely with our CSO partners, as well as our instructional coach, Tony Berger, in order to, um, develop these different assessments. So we have some examples that we're going to talk about.
Yeah, so in sixth grade, some of the recent performance, uh, based assessments that we've done as said on there are our graham cracker inputting lab, and then our orange and frosting lab. Sixth graders love working with food, because they get to eat it after, but, um, in this, they're making sense of creating a model based off of an orange and frosting, and using it to simulate how our real earth is, our mantle, and then they were creating the plates on the orange. So it's kind of making the lab make sense and making that connection.
Um, in seventh grade, uh, we have a matter and energy unit, uh, where we just, um, they learn about the, the transfer of matter and energy through an ecosystem. And, and it's developed around a biosphere project. Um, that's their learning, and then the, the assessment takes that learning and it then applies it to a new, new area. So they don't just get, they're not just in this area now, that the assessment has, um, research Yellowstone, and then take the learning from one place to another, showing that they are transferring the skills to not just the one situation, but- showing that they are transferring the skills to not just the one situation, but two multiple situations. So that's what that one is about.
And then for eighth grade, we're taking that learning from the paper roller coaster that John had talked about. And we thought it'd be kind of fun with bow hunting happening. So we made bow and arrows out of, uh, paper clips and rubber bands. And we did shoot some pencils in the classroom, but it was safe. We were talking about the distance the projectile goes as relation to kinetic energy and then the pullback on the bow as the potential energy. So they would discuss that transfer. Um, modeling, um, when we looked at the heat map for the forward exam, this is SEP two. And SEP two, we struggled with on the forward exam. So we were kind of analyzing, hey, where does our curriculum hit this? Um, and it wasn't that great. So this is something that we added in as a science PLC. This is something that we've really enhanced this year specifically, both in our science notebooks and doing these, uh, physical projects, um, like Kane's about to start.
Yeah, so I already kind of showed this example of our earth model. Um, so this is the different layers of the earth. So the students were responsible for cutting out all the pages, coloring it, and they had to successfully label all of the layers and then as well as like the contents on this other side. So they were working together in making the model, but also making sense of our model. And some other modeling that we've done also recently is in our science notebooks. And we have had the sixth graders recently made a kind of puzzle of how our plates used to be. And then they were putting it back together and then going in their notebooks. So a lot of different ways of having them show off their models besides just maybe like a physical, um, cutout or like in their notebook.
And then for the seventh grade one up there, our first unit of the year was the structure and function of the cell, looking at how cells work and how the organelles, the smaller pieces in the cell all work together. And as an assessment, they had to make a model of the cell. The students, uh, example you see out there chose to model a plant cell. They had to draw it all out, add in all the organelles, the tiny pieces, tell us what they do, how they work together and how that makes the body work as a whole. So just trying to dig down deep and make those connections through the model.
And then for eighth grade, what you've seen are examples once again of the paper roller coaster. Uh, as I'm relearning as much as I am in science, science is very, very complicated. Um, and one of my favorite things about these ones is you can see our students being able to retain as much of their learning. So they're not only learning the individual pieces one by one, but then on our summative assessments. So this was the ones on the outside were example, we asked them to do at the end of the unit. So they would give us, kind of learn the principles of it, tell us about where the kinetic energy and, um, potential energy transfer and then convert. And then here, show us in the model exactly the different pieces, how to put them together, right? So we're not only teaching them the concepts, but having them apply it. And also especially too, it's helping with engagement. A lot of our students also play art, so it gives them the opportunity to not only draw a picture, um, to visually model that and provide, but also if that's an interest of them, they really do a good job.
And like, um, Mr. Rocco said earlier, our science types, these are things that when you walk into our classroom, you will see us demonstrating. These are just some few examples that we came up, we're pretty proud of this year.
Um, so recently in sixth grade, uh, some of our morons have included a lot of talk about our specific plate boundary, um, uh, divergent plate boundary. Uh, so that consists of students using Amplify, which is kind of like our curriculum. Uh, they use that as kind of a guiding question where they talk about what was going on individually. And then in their small groups, they kind of are making sense of the questions. Or if we have done a simulation recently, they will talk about what they observed, questions, and overall just kind of group discussion. And then we come back as a whole class to kind of talk about our observations, um, maybe questions we have and trying to, uh, bring all our thinking together.
Um, in seventh grade, uh, the year starts off with a lot of data, data analysis. Um, it's focused on actually a fecal transplant of all things, but they're analyzing pie charts. They're seeing how bacteria in a microbiome grow, um, after the fecal transplant. They're coming up with their own conclusions based on it. And it's never about the answer they come up with. It's whatever the answer they came up with, did they support it with something that they learned in class? Um, there's also been, uh, quite a few simulations that allow them to, um, so in the metabolism unit we're doing right now, they can actually see kind of the path of molecules through the body. And that's allowed them to not just learn that, but also, well, what happens if one of these molecules is blocked? If you, uh, analysis on a patient and see what disease she has. So, um, they notice that the sugar's not getting to the cells because, and they are able to diagnose her with diabetes and things like that. So these simulations kind of allow them to do some of that exploration, um, that would be harder to do without.
And then in eighth grade, um, we build the marble roller coasters about like the second or third week of school. But really, we're just trying to introduce what is our lab protocol? What are the SEPs? Cause when we say SEPs, they're like, I'm, I'm not listening anymore. We're done. So just introducing those concepts to them. And then we really are trying to work on those durable skills. Those are some things that, um, I've done some PD work myself on. Just how do we create humans that are going to be useful in the community? How are they going to be successful? And so when we are doing these science labs and our performance-based assessments and our modeling and all the discussion that we have in our classroom, we're working on collaboration and communication and critical thinking, just trying to strengthen those, um, durable skills. And then this was a, a cool, um, website that Amy Zadnikar, she found last year. She was a sixth grade science teacher. Um, she now is a counselor at the middle school, working with us still in support of our science department with all of her knowledge. But it's a website called Engineering Tomorrow. And you go on the website, you fill out certain information about what you teach and your district, and then what your kids need. And they send you free engineering labs for all of the students that you have. Um, you just have to answer those questions and fill out what standards do you need help with. And so in order to enhance our curriculum, um, these are the ones that we chose.
So in sixth grade, we, our main three are renewable energy, electric vehicles, and clean water. Uh, this week actually, we just started our renewable energy unit. Uh, so they are focusing on the hands-on, uh, group collaboration where they are building a windmill that is able to function and kind of reflect renewable energy. And we're also trying to make a connection, uh, in sixth grade in their ELA classes. They just finished a book called The Void Who Harnesses the Winds. And he was building a windmill, so we're trying to make those connections between, um, our classes.
Oh, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
Very, uh, slow to jump on. Seventh grade, uh, the biomedical system kind of goes with our current unit. Um, probably end up doing that lab in the next month or so. And then we do get a big genetics unit, um, probably February. So those are two labs. I haven't done the labs yet, so I'm very excited to try.
And then for eighth grade, um, we took a survey of what our kids were interested in this year and a lot of them said space. And so as teaching our physical science, we're trying to incorporate more of their interests. So asteroid dynamics would be something we would be doing just around like testing time, just to take a mental break, but still do that hands-on learning. And then our sounds and acoustics lab would go with our wave and energy unit later on in the year. So really, again, these are just to enhance what we already have. These are just some pictures of our students in the classroom.
Uh, the, on the far left of the three, uh, you can see our students in sixth grade are playing with our orange model. Uh, they are trying to figure out a way to put our plates back onto the earth and also not pictured them telling me, why are we mixing green frosting and oranges? They were, had a lot of questions on that. But in the top right, you can see, um, we had these students at the very beginning of the year, picked ten, uh, important events to them. And then it was their responsibility to do research on that day and find the moon phase that it was. And then they had to identify it. And then after that, they were in charge of making a poster to kind of visually represent those important events. In our bottom right corner, you can see, um, three restaurants, uh, with the different pages in their notebooks. In the far right one, you can see an example of a model that we've talked about, like the spheres of the earth. In the middle, it's kind of hard to see, but it's like our vocab pages. And then the far left one represents the most recent model that we've done in sixth grade.
Uh, in seventh grade, we are not a photographer group, so, um, Jacob was supposed to take all the pictures, but, um, he left it on, so. The one picture there shows, uh, we did, did a lab in seventh grade, uh, where we, they were just given, um, some paper and tape and they had to make a platform to support books and as many books as they could support. Uh, these two, um, ended up creating a platform that supported all twenty-two of my textbooks. So, um, it actually didn't fail until we tried to stand on it. Of course, I put it on the ground first, but, um, just challenging them to thinking of different ways to make the strong structures, so.
And then those marble roller coasters that we've been talking about this whole time, this just, um, some pictures of the different teams that we had, they had come up with a theme and incorporated it throughout. And that's what they demonstrated on their final summative assessment that you saw pictured earlier. Thank you.
Questions for us?
I just want to say, this is incredible. I really like hearing all the grade levels, but I have a like unique fascination with middle school because they're like so developmentally unique as they like migrating from imaginative to like a bit more concrete thinking. Um, I like the critical thinking, you guys did a great job. And I, it really, this is why, why I show up and, and, and part of this, because I, the work you guys do is incredible. So thank you.
This is fantastic. Uh, it just reminded me a lot of things. In nineteen eighty-two, I was in the eighth grade and my teacher was Tony Rosener. We used to have all those things in a science exhibition. So next door, we have a school, St. Mary's. All the girls come and see, uh, because it is not co-education, it is two different schools, St. Bonaventure, St. Mary's. And they all come each other and appreciate their scientific skill. Do you folks have any exhibition of roller coasters? So we get to come and see.
Um, so we have our, what do we call this?
Student showcase.
Student showcase at the end of the year. Um, it's something we've talked about incorporating with, um, the middle of the year conferences. It's something we have to nail down though, because it's school-wide, it's not just gonna be us. Um, but, uh, Megan and Brittany from CISA, we, Mr. Prell and I just went to the, um, science seminar classes that they give. And there's an opportunity for us to participate in a science fair with, uh, Cooley Region schools. And so that's something we're gonna really try hard to, to do. Um, it's new though. But yeah, that would be the idea. We have our student showcase at the end of the year and then, um, hopefully something.
This is amazing. It just reminds me of my, my childhood. So that is very, so there is this teacher in Black River Falls and now he's in high school, um, Mr. Shepherd. He has decade fair.
He used to.
Right?
He used to, used to.
He retired?
No, he is still here. He does, no longer does the decade fair.
He used to do decade fair. I loved it, the way he, um, yeah, thank you very much, yeah.
If I could just share something about the science department. Um, so you heard all of them when they introduced themselves, they said that they teach science and, right? Uh, when we had the ESTRA funds, that was something that we did at the middle school very quickly is we added one teacher to each one of the grade levels so that there was an even number of six teachers at each grade level. And so then they could become more experts in the content area. Because of the number of kids that we have, we need, um, uh, math and science, or math and ELA were longer blocked and then science and social studies. And so, um, we really struggle sometimes to find people that can do multiple content areas with that same level of expertise and investment. And when there were six at each grade level, you did a lot of the really heavy digging into the curriculum work. And they have done such a fantastic job of making sure that they kept the best of all of that hard work, which you talked about the heat maps from the Wisconsin Forward. Some teachers come to those meetings like a hot needle in the eye. Um, and the team comes and it looks at what are the questions that are most frequently asked? What are the concepts most frequently asked in the Wisconsin Forward? And how can we make sure that those are the content areas that we're really covering? I don't know if you went through that quickly, that was twenty-three percent of our kids advanced, not just proficient, but advanced. That is almost a quarter of our students.
And none of that shows up on DPI scores, correct?
And none of that is on the state report card. Science is not reflected on the report card in any way, shape, or form, which is incredibly unfortunate. And also is further evidence that the kids are so, um, invested in the work that they're doing in science. You guys just shared with us a million reasons why kids are invested in science. Um, you are extremely conscientious about the content that you pick and the high engagement level being your focus. Um, and it shows us that our kids are capable of that caliber of work. If only, um, it were on the report cards so everyone could appreciate those efforts. But I just really want to give a huge kudos to the team. And, um, two members, this is their first year, Kane and John are both brilliant teachers to us this year. And we're very glad that they joined such a high-functioning team as well, so.
Uh, two questions and the comment, the first comment, you guys are crushing it. You folks are crushing it. I really appreciate it. The whole middle school is actually, but, um.
And did you hear that?
Yeah. It's really impressive.
Not supposed to make comments.
And so, so my first question is, uh, the, the magic wand question I ask everybody. If you were in a magical world and there were no financial limitations, you could have whatever you wanted. You had a magic wand, poof, whatever you need. What would help you guys do a better job or expand your teaching?
I have an answer.
Because I'm waiting to be asked.
So we have a new tech and teacher, Mr. S. Um, he's really trying to expand our, um, technology that we have down there. And I would love to see that collaboration with him. So the 3D printer, the laser, there's another machine that I don't know the name of.
Vinyl, vinyl, by something vinyl cutter or something.
Something like that. And so to incorporate those into our hands-on learning and have that like cross-curricular setup, I think that would be very cool.
What's the barrier to that? Just the timing or the limits?
Those tools are extremely expensive, extremely expensive.
Yeah, I, I think.
Space, time, all the things, oh shit.
I, I think if I could add on to that, I, I think just equipment, science equipment, especially for a lot of the hands-on stuff that we would all love to do, is extremely expensive and hard to get and wears out semi-quickly. So when it does go, it's hard to get replacements. So if we could just wave the magic wand, no issues. Just being able to have, um, more of the equipment that we would need to do a lot more of the hands-on stuff that we really would love to be doing.
And ballistics gel is pretty cheap. And all you need is a bucket and a refrigerator, just so you know, just if you're, if you're. Uh, and, and the second question is, is somewhat cheeky, but also somewhat real. Do any of you use the school forest?
We have not.
I've not used the forest, I walked.
They wander park more frequently than the, the school forest as a middle school.
Yeah, I know that the high school has, there's in the past, there's been a middle, middle school teacher that have one there. I just have to talk that.
But so with that performance-based assessment, it takes a bit to plan these things and, and normally that performance-based assessment is three to five days. And so that's something we're slowly incorporating into our curriculum. Um, so, yes, maybe in the future.
And that wasn't a, use the school forest. That was just an open question, is, is it gonna be like? Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for your time, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cinnamon rolls tomorrow, that matters to any of you.
Moving on to ten point three then. I don't know. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right. So, um, I, I don't often like ask for a whole lot of time. Uh, I went to the legislative conference last Saturday by about one o'clock. I was literally feeling sick to my stomach. Um, it basically went all, uh, through all the different ways that, uh, the federal and state government are targeting school funding. And so very long, very arduous, very terrible. Um, I feel like, uh, what I, what I recognize is that, um, across the country and the state, that school boards are the largest number of elected officials, hands down, across the board. On top of it, we're, we're typically more bipartisan, like most people aren't really like, shouldn't we? You know, so, um, we play kind of a unique role in, in shaping, um, the legislative functioning. And, and I think it's a place that we as a board are not as active or participating in ways that we could or should. Um, I think we do an okay job of talking about things that are happening locally, but some of the things that can impact us in really big ways are happening outside of our, our, our district and outside of our board, board as a whole. Um, I asked some questions about our federal funding. Um, the federal government has been targeting certain areas and trying to eliminate certain streams of funding. We received one million, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars-ish.
Yep.
Um, last year in federal funding. And, um, it sounds like they're just gonna kind of start to try and chisel away at it. And it sounds like they're just gonna kind of start to try and chisel away at it. In addition, there's this huge thing regarding vouchers. I know we've kind of like talked briefly about it. It is, has the potential to really, really change the climate of schools for kids. Something that we probably, I think if we're gonna be effective, should get really well-versed in because it has a, has high potential to really impact quality for our kids here. I would like to, they threw out a lot of ideas about ways we can get involved and then some that seemed overfetched. But I think it would be, I think it's important for us to start kind of thinking in terms of how can we be present at the table. There's some, some regions will have special board meetings where all the board members from different districts will come together and they'll come up with a collaborative, like strategic plan to try and target input and legislative like functioning. I just, we don't even talk about it as a group. And I think it's something that if we don't, we're going to come into that conversation far later than we should and it will have dire effect.
If I, if I may touch on the vouchers a little bit, that is going to be a thing that you're gonna keep hearing about coming up. There's a 10% cap on vouchers currently, but that's gonna go away in the near future. For your reference, since 2020, our voucher exemption's been, 2020 about 30,000, by 2024, it was 173,000. And this past year was 210,000. So, just a steady increase of the voucher payments that we make. Those voucher payments go on to our revenue exemptions and it is money that our local taxpayers pay to voucher schools for students to attend these. We don't get to know those.
Under the guise of public education, just to be clear. Like it's a school tax, but not dollars that we ever get to spend. And so, taxpayers lump it in with us and they're really supporting two systems, the public education system and a voucher system.
I agree with you. I think that it is only a matter of time, you know? It is hard to imagine making any sort of change outside of the community level. But I think that it is important to try because at the end of the day, the kids suffer the most for it than when we don't have funding for education, we don't have a way to really provide a good future for the children of the community. Eventually, communities start to die, you know? And so, I think that as much as we play with power, I think we need to start advocating a little bit more. What sort of, like how do you envision, like do you have sort of the vision of what that looks like or ideas of sort of next steps or?
I think a legislative committee would be a great place to start. No, the answer to the other question is absolutely, I don't. I went to the conference, that was my first step. I believe in advocacy. I believe that if you don't use your voice, then what's the point? The state-level stuff was equally icky, but less pressing at the moment. So, there was that. So, I think just even that committee learning what our best avenues are to be heard and to be part of the conversation is gonna be a big piece of it. Well, at the state conference in January, we'll have an opportunity to go and vote as a board on how we feel about certain things that they'll lobby for. But we can lobby ourselves and we can lobby as a region and we can lobby as a board by making calls to our legislatures and like making calls for our elected officials and saying, here's where our stance is on education. And both sides of the aisle, I don't care, it just, they're intentionally and very like strategically targeting our kids. And I just, it's scary, like really scary. We already don't have enough to work with. And so, watching that dwindle when it's such a high like intensity climate, it just, I think we don't wanna get caught like kind of squabbling amongst ourselves when the bigger fish, well, we gotta keep an eye on like the bigger fish too here.
I have a question. WSB and WSD already lobbying for us, correct? But you're wanting the school board to get more politically active, the state senate?
So, I would just share an example. In the, one of our board policies, we just went over it and it talked about, oh, the board self-assessment that you guys haven't taken yet because you asked for it to be moved to March. In that board self-assessment, it says, "We have a defined and clear legislative advocacy program." So, it is very normal for boards to have conversations about possible bills and introduced changes. And so, I would just offer that something that used to exist in Black River Falls is there was a subcommittee that was called the Legislative Advocacy Group. And that group chose to go to conferences, choose to read more articles. They would talk about things and maybe they met four times a year, they would report back to the board on what was on the horizon. And then it feels less like one person went to a conference trying to stir up support and interest and a couple of people having, so three could be the maximum if it's a subcommittee. And then they repeatedly bring it back to the board so that it doesn't fall off the radar. That is something that used to exist here.
I don't think it needs to feel political. We're not advocating for political science, but we're advocating for the kids within the context of that environment, so.
It's hard to separate though. Let's be honest.
It's really hard to separate. But I think that the, my understanding from the conference was just that a lot of times the average person doesn't understand Impact Aid and da-da-da-da-da. But we act, we can act as an intermediary to help understand and bridge those gaps between, because these are the people that are gonna vote, right? Like, so helping them understand what the, what the impact of their vote means for kids is huge.
Something that PAZDA talks about a lot is how can we help our elected officials be armed with local stories? So, I hear about this in chambers and I'm not really sure what it looks like in the communities that I represent. And so, our CISA group of superintendents hosts a legislative breakfast once a year where we invite all of our representatives from our region. And we just sit down and have conversations about how this piece affects Black River Falls, whereas nobody else on the table cares about it because it doesn't affect them, right? That same thing happens with pick any topic, right? It depends on the communities that you serve, which topics are more impactful. Whereas there are some that are just general, right? Like special education reimbursement, that's a topic that everybody can talk about because everybody has special education students that cost a lot of money. So, that is how our CISA and PAZDA choose to handle that. School boards can do the same if they so choose. I think that takes a lot of personal reflection on your part as to what level of involvement and commitment you are interested in making when it comes to political... Legislative advocacy is a nicer way to say political advocacy. I understand that you don't wanna make it political, but it's really challenging to not, it really is. So, focusing on the issues and what it, how it impacts us, stops from siding with parties at the very least.
Yeah, I'd like to take a motion for a legislative subcommittee.
Do you say a second?
Just a great one.
You second, I do. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, a motion, a second, all in favor of forming a legislative subcommittee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, so we need like what, three people?
Well, I'm sorry, maximum of three. Yeah, so it doesn't have to be three, but...
One, two, three, four. Yeah, I think that's, seems, you know, we'll be talking about it this summer again. You guys can think about if you wanna be involved and at what level and give you a little time to think about it.
So, Marty, are you counting the vote at six? Or are you counting Jeanette because we haven't heard?
I'm counting it at six because I...
Okay, I just wanted to be clear, so...
Sorry, I'm trying to work with my phone here. I would be in favor of that.
Thank you, Jeanette. I just realized when I was taking notes that I didn't want to know.
Okay, so I guess moving on then to the next topic, 6.1, gifts and grants.
Excellent. Did you see those fantastic gifts and grants that we received this month? The London Charitable Trust, they previous, previously, they awarded us significant funds for our first rendition of smart boards in many classrooms and those have all aged out. Many have been replaced slowly over time. And then they very generously replace many screens at the middle school, high school. They are not the touchscreens, but they are large interact, not interactive, projections. So, we don't have projectors and screens, it is all one unit now. And so, that is a savings for us, but incredibly, incredibly generous, just under $40,000 worth of tech equipment, which is fantastic. You just heard the science department talk about Mr. S., Aaron Svichek, who is our new middle school tech ed teacher. He received a grant from Ron and Joyce Wannick Foundation for some equipment in the tech ed room. I think that was about $8,000.
$8,000, yes.
Yes. And so, that is fantastic that he's been here just not even a quarter of the year yet and he's already reaching out to local philanthropists to help support some of those changes. He does have a large wish list that he had generated. He taught tech ed in the Merrill School District prior. And he's just really, I saw some really cool 3D printer problem-solving things that he was working with the kids on. So, there's some really great things happening and all that equipment is very expensive. And then a little Marway Church did make a donation towards our angel fund. I would just put out my two cents. Remember that at the current rates that the angel funds are going, we are not gonna be able to maintain our food service, low balance account policy through the entire school year unless there are more funds raised for angel funds. I would throw that out there if you are interested in that being an agenda item for more brainstorming or conversation with everybody, either tell me now or when we get to the end with new agenda items. So, those are the gifts and grants and because of the dollar amounts, they do need your approval this month. God bless you.
Okay, I move to approve the gifts and grants for the...
I second.
Alright, all in favor of approving the gifts and grants?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes? Alright, moving on to 6.2, school calendar, 2026, 2027, public hearing results.
So, we had the public hearing and nobody came to share any views. When I sent out the, it was posted in the community as well as shared internally and nobody came. I did receive some email responses from people that were excited at that possibility. So, just a reminder, all the public hearing does is inform the board's opinion. The board would need to, hopefully tonight, if you're in agreement, pass our resolution. That resolution gets sent to the DPI along with our waiver request and then they take their time and make a decision. Once we have a decision from them, then we start creating our local calendar option. There's been a lot of conversation about could we do two years of calendar at a time as opposed to getting to this point in the year and worrying about next year? That if we receive the waiver request, that's a one-year thing. We're not guaranteed to get that same request approved the following year, so I'm not sure we'd be able to do two years at a time. But either way, we will take the one-year request if offered or if approved. So, I would be, examine how many questions about what we are going to be asking them. And we'd be looking for a motion to approve a resolution to apply to DPI for a waiver on the September 1st start date.
I'll make a motion. One second, Ben.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the DPI's September 1st start date.
I make a motion. So, second?
Okay, it was second already. Here's...
Oh, I didn't hear anybody.
Okay.
You can vote for it, just hang on for one second or vote against it, I guess. You can vote, period.
The all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes?
I will keep the board updated when I hear back after the request.
Alright, so moving on to 6.4, district and tribal communication and collaborative policy.
There are zero changes recommended from previous years. This is part of our Impact Aid application. In order for the federal government to release Impact Aid to districts, they need to see board meeting minutes that this policy was reviewed with local boards. And this gets sent in along with our Impact Aid application in January. So, there's no recommended changes from last year. We went over this in great detail as part of the memorandum of understanding with the education department. It just, we left it on the core agenda for November because it is Native American Heritage Month. And so, we often have had this meeting out at the tribal office building, all of those things. So, it needs your approval so that we can use those minutes for our application. And of course, if you have suggestions for changes, we're open to them, but...
You can motion to approve the district and tribal communication and collaboration minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, to approve the district and tribal communication collaboration policy. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All in favor, signify by saying no. Motion passes. Moving on to 7.2, employment recommendations.
You can see that we have our first retirement at the end of the school year. And this gentleman is just coming off of a pretty exciting, fantastic weekend as his daughter just came home as the state champion for the 100-meter freestyle swim and the second year in a row and the runner-up in the 50s. So, not related to his retirement, however, worth celebrating as we're talking about him anyway. So, this does need your approval. We did have resignation of a math teacher mid-year, which is really unfortunate at the middle school. She's moving out of state and we believe she had this intention throughout most of summer and just waited until this point to make it official, so.
Alright, I move to approve the employment recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Employment recommendations pass. Moving on to 8.1, student success report, talented and gifted programming update.
Dr. Sullivan can talk to it, pass.
So, just to start with a little bit of background, in previous years, we had one talented and gifted program director, program coordinator. And that person was a teacher at Rector Elementary School. A lot of the focus of that programming at that point was really focusing on like events, like maybe like a battle of the books or different events throughout. So, last year, we made the decision to split that singular person into two so that we'd have one person at the secondary and one person at the elementary. That person who was the director, she has moved and we wish her well. But now we have two new, very fired-up people about talented and gifted programming. And we went to the Waiteg Conference to learn more and to, so that we could be doing best practices in talented and gifted. And they have been working on developing what programming is gonna look like in the different areas in each building. So, they have developed this vision statement around what talented and gifted looks like. One of the notable changes from previous practice to now is we always used to talk about the 97th percentile is when we started offering programming. What we learned at the conference is in the area around us, programming is frequently offered around that 90th percentile because of variations in how the assessments work as well as how students test. So, right now, we're in the process of really considering how we're going to communicate that so we ensure that all of the building principals know which students fall into that category. And we're really beefing up what can be offered to students. We're doing stuff, we are doing stuff now, but we're definitely in a reboot of this programming. So, there's some really exciting things. We're going to be, we're sending students like at the middle schools for high quizzle, things like that, and really getting involved in lots of different areas. That's kind of the quick version.
So, according to how many kids right now could potentially be included in these?
On average, and this is an average, we're looking... On average, and this is an average, we're looking at a two to three students per grade level is what was in there when we were in that ninety-seventh percentile. Boosting that up, I haven't, we have not ran the numbers yet of what that's going to look like. With the caveat with that two to three per grade level is there's like some classes where there's a chunk of kids, right? Like, so there's like this variation in the data along those lines.
We think that will be ten to fifteen is our rough guess.
Yeah, that's three times.
Yep, yep, about ten to fifteen is roughly it.
So you said right now, if there is activity with this, are students, are there...
There are students that are like, so at one area or one place where we can really target these students are, you've heard about our target times, that's scheduled in the day where every student's get what they need. And so we've been beefing up what that programming looks like around target time. And so some of the big ideas around working with our advanced learners is we just don't want to pile on more work, right? Like, we don't want to just do more. So a lot of what the thinking is similar to what you heard here from the science department, that project-based, problem-based learning, and really a thoughtful process, and really thinking about what she was talking about, those durable skills, what are those things that we need all our students to learn to be good citizens, and engage in problem-solving, communication, collaboration, all of those types of things.
So probably one of the most significant changes is target time. All of our students that were above grade level have already been getting additional practice at a higher level, but it has been probably a deeper dive into similar skills and concepts. The idea now is bringing together more like-minded learners for that time, and letting them dive into something that feels completely different than what they do during the rest of their day, but they're with other kids who are also exceptional learners, and they can work more, work towards working on all of those other skills that Nicole just talked about. And so there'll be some more real-world problems, but again, it's the bringing together of all those kids as opposed to two or three kids per grade level that sit off to the side and work together. So really working on engaging with one another as much as engaging with the content.
It would also help, because right now, the teachers are so busy during target time with everybody else that the talented and gifted kids are getting left out, and they're asking for help, and they're being told, there's no one available to help you, our hands are tied with the main class. And so we're getting talented and gifted students who are trying to do more difficult work and getting no assistance. And that can hopefully be rectified if you move to the ninety-five instead of the ninety-seven and start getting...
Or we're doing ninetieth.
Ninetieth. So you start getting ten or fifteen kids instead of three.
Correct.
Will there be staffing then that can help them, or will that just be more kids in the hallway without help?
So, A, a child in the hallway who's asking for help and is told we don't have time, I really hope you had a conversation with the principal about that, because while every single day, there might not be a staff member to be there with them, I would bet that most days, you can find somebody who can answer those questions. So I don't know if there's been a conversation with the principal, I highly encourage it. If it was a principal that said we can't make it happen, then I would love to be part of that conversation as well. As far as the more kids you engage, there's much more rich dialogue that can happen when you have larger groups of kids. So again, we talked about what are some longer range projects that can happen. It looks different depending on how old the kids are and how independent they can work versus how much adult interaction they need. So it starts with the conversations that we're having and the planning from the coordinators, and then rolling it out through each of the grade levels. So it's, it's all slow change, but we really believe that. So I'm going to go way back, probably, I'm not going to pick a year, but I was a principal, so I'd be at least fifteen, sixteen years ago. We had everybody ninety-third percentile and above in a pull-out math class or a pull-out reading class, and we did not get our bang for our buck. Those kids did not accelerate faster being separated in a group like that, but that's because they did the same work but at a faster pace, as opposed to diving into expanding that understanding into the durable skills like she was talking about. It was really the same work faster as opposed to building more connections to them so that they can dive deeper into those areas of content, so.
The numbers work better for this, for having more people directly.
Correct.
But I, like, I can't say, yes, we're going to, like, it, there's a lot of details between here and then, millage that question with certainty.
And when we talk good, better, best for a reported possibility, absolutely more standing support is hard there.
It's, it's, it's a thing I hate to even mention or bring up, because as you know, when we're going to see the DPI numbers, where the DPI numbers come from is not our talented and gifted students. It's from target.
But our talented and gifted students, we need those numbers too. That is a huge backhaul.
Yeah, I disagree with that last part. So we'll, we'll talk about it when we get to the report card, but I, I don't agree with that part, but that's okay. We can get there. Anything else about that?
Thank you.
The chronic absenteeism, this is something that is part of our core agenda. We do have an awful lot to dig into with the report card and the other items. I don't know if you have more questions, or if you want me to log in, or if you're good looking at this. I guess overall, you can see the picture that we start with the youngest grade levels, and as usual, the Red Creek grade levels are where parents figure that out a little bit more, and you see far more students in the green and light green. Just so everyone is aware what these colors mean, any student who misses ten percent or more of the instruction is considered chronically absent. It does not matter if those are excused or unexcused days. They're just saying there was learning that took place, and you weren't there for it, for whatever reason. You can get through both colors, the green and the yellow are still at ninety percent attendance and above. So truly, everybody who's yellow and green are meeting the state expectations. Everybody who is orange and who is green are below that ninetieth percentile.
And the red, red one?
Orange and red, orange and red, sorry, I don't know whatever I just said.
It's okay.
Sorry. Orange and red.
So things are improving, getting good. Attendance are going.
I disagree. That is not okay for...
Do we have a year over here on the show at all?
Pardon me?
Red is pretty good.
I can share that with you. I'll send that out too. Yep, I definitely can send that out.
I think that would help if you saw like...
Yeah, red is so small. You see that color red?
Not, but that's by grades. By the time you get to the seniors, it's brutal.
But even the orange is not acceptable. So when we get to the state report card, we are scored off chronic absenteeism in at least three different areas. So this attendance is also negatively impacting our scores. So it, it's not okay. That big orange line, it has to get better.
It's a huge chunk of the DPI scores for the high school.
It really means...
And it, it factors in the targeted groups, and then it factors in again, and so those groups and those, those groups get hit again when it comes to growth. You see them included in the growth, and then again in the targeted groups. All this stuff is not factored in once. Some of these categories are factored in multiple times alternately.
So I am going to send out last year comparison attendance.
Can you do like a three-year?
I am uncertain what next path has in it, so I will see how far back I can make it go, because this is our neutral, so. And so that is the other part too. I will say when we get to our report cards, I was going to, but I'll tell you now. This is actually this year. This is literally as of November thirteenth. On the state report card, the percent of chronic absenteeism, for some reason, on the state report card, attendance is yet another year delayed. So all of the achievement data that we're going to look at is from the spring of twenty-five assessments. The attendance is from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So next year, when we have spring of twenty-six data on achievement, we will have the twenty-four, twenty-five attendance. So we are being measured and scored multiple times on attendance data that is more than a year and a half late.
Is there a logical calendar reason for why that is?
Because DPI says so.
Okay. It's not like it's more convenient to get that data by a certain date or something. There's no rational reason for that.
None that I can uncover. Okay, and any other questions about that? Okay. Then I was going to walk through the district report card, so that you can apply what I'm going to talk about with this one to all of the rest of the cards, and if you have questions, we can go through, I am wide open to answer any of the specific questions you have, but I thought if I just go over this one first, you'll know how to read the others as well. So we're going to start off on top with our demographics. We are at eighteen point nine percent American Indian or Alaskan Native, and seven point two percent two or more races. I would just remind you that remember the last time we did our memorandum of understanding with the education department, they asked us to stop recording just our Native American students, but to incorporate our Native American and two or more races, because they believe that a lot of their families are now clicking either one of those boxes. And so for their purposes, they add those two columns together. Our students with disabilities at twenty-one percent, again, that state average is at fifteen percent. That was a data piece that I looked really close when I compared us to our regional neighbors. We already were there at twelve percent, ten percent, so twenty-one percent is significantly impactful for us. And then as a district, fifty-six percent economically disadvantaged. Again, I'm assuming that you've seen some of the reports that one of the most impactful indicators of student success is unfortunately the socioeconomic status of their family. And so that number continues to change. So scroll, the overall score summary there is a fifty-six point eight. It is up one tenth from last year, and I just got to tell you that I worked with a couple teams of teachers, and I can't even tell you how disheartening that number is for them to see. They feel like so much time, effort, and energy goes in, and they just despise the calculations that create this. They just despise it. When you can see twenty-three percent of our science kids are advanced, but that doesn't show up anywhere here, and it, it just, there's so many other indicators of student success, and none of them appear here, so.
I think it's worth pointing out to the camera, to anybody who even thinks about looking at these things, that student achievement is only ten percent of this.
That's where I was headed next. So that is the other piece, the priority area weights. So that pie that's up there is different for every single school within our system and every single school everywhere. So this top part of the pie, the achievement and growth, is based off of our demographics on top. So the state tried to weight your achievement scores and your growth scores, and they tried to, they created some massive formula that's supposed to take into account your free and reduce rate and your demographics. I had several people reach out to me and say that without looking at any of our achievement, but looking at our socioeconomic and attendance, they could predict our score by looking at attendance and socioeconomic. They said, most districts, you could guess what their, you could estimate what their score is going to be. So that top part, he is absolutely correct. It is ten point six percent based on achievement. So you might think, well, our achievement is lower than we'd like it to be. That's a good thing that it doesn't weigh that heavy. Except, when you looked at the Red Creek actual percentage of students that are proficient and advanced, it grew, but because it only weighed such a tiny bit amount, and our growth wasn't as high as it usually was, our score stayed down because our growth is nineteen, or thirty-nine percent of that total calculation. So it is not a straight achievement record, but it is not for anybody in the whole state. So this, I am not trying to cry sour, sour grapes, whatever, sour apples, I don't know, I made that up, sour grapes, but it is important to recognize that those percentages on top, it is telling us that growth should be our highest priority, okay? So then we go down into the bottom right here, where we have priority area scores. So that top section of subject area scores, you can see English Language Arts, fifty-three point eight, the state at sixty-three point nine, math fifty-three point six, sixty-five point six. If you remember a couple meetings ago, I, if you look back in your packets, you'll find our gap closing, and we were closing the gap, I can't remember which subject area for each building, but high school, a significant gap closing in ELA, like significant, and each of the other buildings has some areas where we're closing the gaps. But again, our achievement is not what counts the most for us. So then is the growth. I will tell you that we used to be the strongest in growth, and I am, our growth was not as high this year, and so that dramatically impacted our overall score. So you can see what the state average is with the lighter line below, and then what our score was above. So the target group outcomes, I want to explain what that target group is. So previously, they used to compare the Native American students in Black River Falls to Native American students in the whole state, or the free and reduced kids from Black River Falls to the free and reduced to the rest of the state. They stopped doing that because they felt like districts that didn't have any of those disaggregated groups, significant population, they felt like that was unreasonable. So what they do now is they take our bottom twenty-five percent students, and they compare it to the other seventy-five percent. So that's, at, at first, when we all heard this, we're like, well, great, we can print out who those bottom twenty-five percent students are, and we can really target, and, and we will have some fantastic growth. But it is the bottom twenty-five free and reduced kids in math, and compared to the other seventy-five percent. And then it's the bottom in ELA, and then it's the bottom Native American, and then it's the bottom special education. So it's a group of the bottom twenty-five percent of every single one of those disaggregated groups compared to the other seventy-five percent of each one of those groups. So it's not a nice clean list, and you might be the bottom twenty-five percent in math, but not ELA, and so on and so forth. So this is all part of that calculation that they are doing. So target group outcomes, the bottom twenty-five percent of any subgroup compared to the other seventy-five percent of those same subgroups. So on track to graduation is the blue area there, and here's where our attendance kicks us the first time. Chronic absenteeism, you can see that we lag behind in the state there. Graduation rate is a little bit lower. If you ask the high school, they will say that they would accept a little bit lower rate because they feel really good about some of the changes they've made to increase the expectations to get there, as opposed to kids joining some of the alt-ed programs for an easy rope to graduation. They appreciate a sense of pride in what the kids are earning in that diploma. Then you can see, this is what the state has decided on track to graduation. It is third grade ELA and eighth grade math are the scores that they use to determine on track to graduation. So this is the information that makes up that overall score, and then we go through the other pages that breaks it down into a whole bunch. This is just distribution to increase past that. We'll get down to the achievement. There we are. You can see where it places this district compared to others. Our English Language Arts and our math, again, our priority area score came down to a fifty-three point seven. That next middle section gives you just a really quick indicator of which of these subgroups went either up or down by that little carrot that's over by there. In English Language Arts, you can see a slight increase in American Indian or Alaskan Native, and our white students are economically disadvantaged, and then the area was go down for the others. You can move down here, is what we were talking about, that our advanced students have increased. So when you said our gifted kids aren't helping us, I would say that there are kids who are scoring in the advanced range, who are still not ninetieth percentile, so that might not be all of them.
But they're not going to be in that targeted bottom twenty-five percent group, and that group gets factored in twice, both in a thirty-six percent of our, and then another twenty-five percent.
Yes.
You add those two groups together, that's over fifty percent of our grade being made up by the representation of those kids. When you're looking at the high school data, more than twenty-five percent of our kids are chronically absent. That targeted group is counting the absenteeism rate for the bottom twenty-five percent. That's one hundred percent of the targeted groups are chronically absent. That score alone tanks us for good, and nobody's going to see any of this or understand any of this. They're going to come, and they're going to Google the school district, and they're going to see that DPI score, and that's it. We're absolutely hosed by that calculation. I, I did my best, I'm sorry.
And you've spent a little time marinating in this, so I appreciate it.
Since this went up, I've spent quite a lot of time marinating in these numbers.
Okay, so you can see in ELA, our percent advanced grew. In math, it went down just slightly, but really just very slight. I will explain a little bit something about growth scores, just so that you understand. So the state gives us points when we grow a student from one category to the next category, from one year testing to the next year testing. So for example, if you move a student from the orange, which is developing, to the yellow, which is approaching, we get point five for moving that student from one category to the next, point five. If we move a kid from the approaching to the meeting, so the yellow to the purple, we get one point for each one of those kids that move from approaching to meeting. And then if you move a kid from meeting to advance, we get one point five points for those students. And so we had a long conversation, after looking at all this, about all of our intervention time and our target time efforts to bring that bottom twenty-five percent up, because the target group matters an awful, awful, awful lot. But when we move a student from that bottom twenty-five percent up, we get half a point for that. Whereas if we're moving kids from meeting to advance, we're getting one point five points.
Now, can you correct me if I'm wrong, Hannah?
Yes.
Because that...
I can try.
Well, my understanding, and this might be wrong, because these numbers are purposely opaque, is that because that developing number is greater than twenty-five percent, and you're looking at growth being when a student moves from one category to the next, by the fact that by definition, they're only looking at the bottom twenty-five the next, by the fact that by definition, they're only looking at the bottom twenty-five percent, there is zero possibility for anybody to grow because there's twenty-seven percent in developing. So that twenty-five percent is all going to fall in that developing range and not a single one of those kids are going to be able to move up to the next category unless that developing number drops below twenty-five percent. That number is just dead. It's just a dead number that never changes.
So every district will always have a bottom twenty-five percent. How low that bottom twenty-five percent is could be different in every district. There might be, I'm going to say White Fish Bay, which is one of the top performing districts in the state, which they might have, their bottom twenty-five percent might be, and I'm making this up, I do not know the number, it could be eight percent in developing and then the rest of it could be approaching.
But as soon as you hit a twenty-five percent is developing, by definition, that group cannot change.
It could, it could.
Unless we drop the total number of developing students.
So the, what box they fit in here does not determine where that twenty-five percent is. Our bottom twenty-five percent is all of our kids in ELA, no matter what color they are here, our bottom twenty-five percent is our bottom twenty-five percent.
So they're using the raw numbers, not these four categories. We just don't get to see those raw numbers.
We can download it and know, but it crosses so many different categories.
So you do get access to the raw data?
We have to request it, don't we? We had to send in a special request for those lists?
We can get it, we can get it.
Yeah.
But it's very opaque.
Yeah.
And it's also not just a one time, it's, it's an average over, this, it's two years.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So all of the achievement data, all of, so all of the achievements is a two-year rolling average, whereas absenteeism is two years delayed, so.
So that's at least, that answers my question. There are real numbers somewhere that that bottom, because it's the bottom twenty-three percent according to these four ordinal groups, you can never leave that twenty-five percent.
So that was the difference in not comparing to the rest of the state. Every single, so there are districts who receive a significantly exceeds expectations and they still have a bottom twenty-five percent. So it really is always everybody's bottom against our upper seventy-five percent regardless of where they would sit there. Yes?
So total population from K four to twelve is one thousand five hundred and fifty-two students. It stays there.
Yeah, I believe.
And then this picture which we are seeing, twenty-five, approaching and developing.
Exactly.
Underneath.
Yeah, he's getting there.
Yeah.
There you go.
Approaching and developing, both together, five hundred and eighty-four students. Similarly, in mathematics, we have five hundred and ninety-seven students approaching and developing, which means they are a little bit behind in academic. So five, let's say six hundred, so five hundred and, one thousand five hundred and fifty-two, six hundred students are a little bit behind, to be fair, but more than nine hundred doing good.
So while I appreciate that perspective, the front page is our total enrollment and not all of our students are tested.
Okay, okay.
So if you add it up where you were adding the orange and yellow, you would also need to add the purple and the.
They are, they are fantastic.
Right, but that is the total number of students in our tested grades.
Oh, okay. So K four, four is not taking this test.
Kindergarten, well, four K, early childhood, four K kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third, third grade does.
So this is a fourth grade onward.
And, no, ninth and tenth do, so that, that test happens through eighth grade, so, and then ninth and tenth do the ASPI, pre ACT secure, and then juniors do the ACT.
Ninth, tenth, eleventh, not twelfth grade.
Not twelfth grade.
Not twelfth grade, right?
So no seniors and nobody below third grade.
Okay. So, okay, then, then my calculation would be different. So basically, we are a little bit behind and we've been meeting lately, so I will be sharing my expertise and my opinions to, to make school more successful.
Okay.
We, we are not like hundred percent behind.
Nope. Okay, the next chart, if you would like to see those bar graphs compared last year to this year and disaggregated by all of our groups. So you can see the state percent advanced, you can see are all students and then you can see each one of those broken down there. The top chart is all English language charts and the bottom one is all mathematics. And then we go to growth. So again, this was thirty-nine percent of our overall rating and it was not at all representative of what our growth usually is. So that was, we've had lots of conversations about where we focused our greatest efforts and why some of those other kids perhaps didn't move as we have seen in the past. So lots of conversations. The value added is similar to the growth, but not exactly. When you go through each of the individual schools, you'll see some of the schools have some really nice results there, particularly some of the subgroups that perform higher. What this chart is saying is that a score of a three point O is average, so a student that attends, that is not chronically absent, so is present more than ninety percent of the school here and the teacher is also present during that instruction, that they should grow, there should be value added of a three point O score. And you can see the subgroups that are approaching line, getting closer to line, but this year there were none as a whole district that were over the line. Again, when you look at the individual buildings, you'll see pockets of some really, really strong results there. So the target group outcomes, this is just that bottom twenty-nine percent. So again, you see that that bottom twenty-five percent, this gets to Alex's calculation. Not only do they impact our overall achievement score, but they, this whole target group outcome is an additional twenty-five percent just on their own of our overall score. So what that means is even though our number above grade level is growing, the group at the bottom twenty-five percent is that much lower than it is still negatively impacting overall. So it talks about the achievement rate and so that first chart there, you can see the bottom little bar is where the bottom twenty-five percent grew versus the other seventy-five percent in ELA and then in math, the same thing. And chronic absenteeism, again, delayed another year, but our bottom twenty-five percent compared to the other. And so knowing that our other non-target group, that upper seventy-five percent, also has significantly too high percent of chronically absent, when you pull up the bottom twenty-five percent, it's doubly impactful. When you look at growth for English Language Arts, we, the groups were almost the same, which I think is interesting. The bottom twenty-five percent grew at just about the same rate as the other students. I think that is evidence of the intervention system, if there's one positive to take from here, because math is the same in growth. That means our bottom twenty-five percent grew more than our others, which I'm going to go back to, remember, that's only a point five for them to move up a category, but it is evidence that our intervention system is working for our lowest students. It is growing them at a faster rate. The problem is the rest of the students also need to move a lot. So questions about that target group outcomes? This page alone, our bottom twenty-five percent is twenty-five percent of that overall score on the report card. Okay, on track to graduation is next. You can see the chronic absenteeism, the district versus the statewide. And I would just remind you one more time that this is twenty-three, twenty-four attendance. The on track to graduation, again, is always absenteeism, it's graduation rate, third grade, ELA, and eighth grade math are the two. You can see eighth grade math is really approaching the state average there, but it, it had a nice closing of the gap, but, or a reduction of the gap not closed, so. And then are the breakdown of charts, so that if we wanted to take a look at chronic absenteeism, the number that we really just jumps out at us, all of our students in twenty-three, twenty-four, the state average was seventeen point five, we were ten percent higher than that at twenty-seven percent chronically absent. Our American Indian or Alaska Native was forty-eight percent, so almost one out of every two of our Native American students missed more than ten percent of the instruction offered.
Do we get a statewide comparison versus American Indian students statewide? Or we only get American Indian students here versus all students statewide?
Correct. Correct. And that forty-eight percent is forty-eight percent of our students.
Correct.
Yep. Okay. And then you can see Hispanic or Latino, that one is also quite elevated, as is our economically disadvantaged, is at thirty-seven point eight percent, so.
So we don't know how that compares to economically disadvantaged students statewide?
I do not, but that would be an interesting question. I bet I could find that out.
Because if you can compare that, that's how we know whether we're just getting hammered by having more economically disadvantaged students.
Yeah.
Which I don't see as a drawback to the school district. I just see it as something that apparently affects these numbers.
It sure does. Okay, sorry, I wanted to write that down before I forget. And then there's the graduation rate piece there. The district wide and the high school one has another page of additional information, participation by type of post-secondary prep. So you can see AP courses, this is fourteen point three percent successfully completed at least one advanced placement course. And then we have fifty-three point seven percent of kids who successfully completed a dual enrollment. So that's just about, it's just double the state average. Industry recognized credentials, two point seven percent, and then work-based learning just right at, or just slightly above the state average there. And then that bottom hole chart is state, or student group participation. These helps to break down all of those post-secondary preparation things by all of our subcategories, which I think is really interesting for our conversations and tracking. Final bit of information, they just collect this for, so locally, you guys look at our sports participation rates, this is the states look at other types of arts courses. And so I'm going to call our, the fact that we are above average on the art and design, this would be high school only, that is the Jen Doll effect, that we are above the Jen Sweeney doll, doll, that's the right one now, sorry. Effect, dance, we don't have a normal dance, and then music above the state average, and then theater. It says, we don't have a course in theater, but we certainly have kids that participate in a musical each year. So, and then that also breaks that information down by our disaggregated groups. Questions about that, comments?
So once again, we're not getting credits for the strong points in the school district being science, music, art.
So DPI is based on mathematics and ELA.
Correct.
Two things, yeah. That's, that's all.
And attendance.
That's always been like that.
Alex, I appreciate your passion for this. I have not ever had a board member who understood all of this and was just as fired up as I was, so I'm kind of enjoying this, just to be clear.
A brutal algorithmic cluster dance going on here. And, and, and I don't know, I can read these barely.
And I. Parts yet to come, because everybody else is going to read them and think.
No, everyone's going to see a star.
Yes.
Everyone's going to see a star and I don't blame them. And when I moved here, I looked at the schools and they looked pretty good. That was one of the things, you can get a little thing that'll pop up and tell you what are the school district, like where I'm moving. And this, as far as I could tell, was designed to try to help, I'm going to say Milwaukee school districts or other school districts, but grades were really low. And the idea was, we don't want to measure performance because that's unfair for school district, because doubled his performance is still going to be bad. So they're judging on growth. We're in a nasty spot where our performance is high enough that we would actually do better if we were being judged on our performance. We spend all this time talking about, should we bring up math scores, should we give the scores? That doesn't matter. And, and, and this is something that frustrates the heck out of me on a number of levels. And I don't know if anybody's watching, I don't know if they will watch, and there's certainly room for improvement. But the way that this algorithm has calculated, I don't understand why the percentages are different for the high school versus the middle school or the elementary school. I assume just what percentage is disadvantaged versus not in each school district.
Absolutely, it's demographics in each.
But we don't get to see how that sausage is made. And then within each of the subcategories, we don't get to see how that sausage is made. We can only hint at it and every hint we have at it is to the disadvantage of this particular school district, whether by fate or, it's very upsetting. And, and I see why people are upset, I see why faculty would, it is true, no one's going to understand this, I barely understand this. And DPI puts forward the most opaque data possible. It's incredibly difficult to read, even whoever you're looking at. And then they give a frickin' star or two or three and that's it. And it's a problem. If you want to talk about advocacy.
Some of your lobbying stuff there.
This would be the thing to advocate about. And if you want to talk about advocacy, that would be nonpartisan, this might be it as well. Because this has done undue.
Damage.
Damage. Unnecessary, undue and unhelpful damage.
And there are some communities who never have any idea what their school card looks like because nobody cares. They care about the experience that they're having with the school. We are not that district. We understand that. Honestly, the most disheartening part is when you see staff members who are fantastic at their work and they feel judged, but like all those science teachers feel completely represented by this.
Has nothing to do with them. Every single thing they have done is not reflected in any way, except in the amount that it has encouraged a student to continue their learning.
Attendance.
Across, maybe attendance if they're doing fun stuff. But it is easy to fall in a cynical hole and start teaching to the test with this sort of stuff. When you see that there are certain students whose performance is multiplied many times over and there are certain students, and I'm going to say talented and gifted, since I mentioned this earlier and you disagreed with me. You did. They are not, they are not counted multiple times over. There, there are, there are students who's, if we want to target someone, it's very clear mathematically where we need to go and where we need to spend our money. And it isn't even in classes. It's not in teaching math better, it's not in teaching English better, it's in getting people through the door. And when I first started in school board, I didn't get it. I, there was all this focus on attendance, you said, yeah, well, people don't attend, they can't learn. I'm not even sure that's it. It's that if people won't attend, we get a frickin' star rating from DPI based on that attendance and you cannot beat the algorithm. And I see why you're upset about not being able to issue tickets for truancy. I see if you want to talk about advocacy, why the school board should maybe go talk to the, that angle. Because we need to be able to do something to change these numbers and it, I'm afraid to say, isn't improving your math education. It's dealing with nitty gritty minutia of this calculation, which might change four years from now and put all our hard work to naught if we even care about it. And it's very tempting to then say, don't care about it, just let the teachers do their thing. But that's very difficult to communicate to the average person who's going to be looking up and seeing a star or two stars.
And they are very, very, very loud.
I don't blame them. I mean, that's fair, yeah, I mean, that's fair, yeah.
So they haven't teamed it and we.
None of which is, sorry, none of which is me being upset with you or your fault. And many people have pointed out, I am a very animated individual. I think people have gotten used to that now. This animates me a great deal.
So I don't think there's anybody within the district that doesn't fully acknowledge that there's improvement that needs to happen, right? There's, there's nobody that under, doesn't understand that. We are working incredibly hard. What we are most challenged with is when you look at really, really, really great staff who are doing really, really, really great things and then they are judged by this and it just feels like it is a never-ending battle. And we, we continue to focus on growth, we continue to focus on improvement because there's no reason that we can't get at the state average, right?
There is. You and your expertise is wringing blood from a stone and you have done it. If grades stay the same in this school district as they were last year and the year before and the year before that and the year before that with zero growth, which will hose us in this category, that's a miracle because we have been cutting the funding to this program since 2010. And the idea that we're expected to grow anything when we are cutting money from the programs every year for over a decade. when we are cutting money from the programs every year for over a decade. We're not going to have growth. We want to up our growth store, boom. And if we want to talk about why we need a referendum, which this isn't going to help land, people are going to look at this and say, well, they want more money, look at these scores. It is to be sold hard as, yeah, look at these scores. We can't grow because we have starved the school district for a decade straight. And then we're expected to be judged on growth. Who's going to grow with no money? We have inflation, we have less spending, and we're supposed to grow? It's absolutely absurd. Absolutely absurd.
Can we move on to another slide? Red Creek or middle school or high school? We have a long way to go.
So I guess I was going to ask the board, do you need me to walk you through the others, or have you looked at them? I feel like my purpose was that if I walk you through the district one, you understand all of the data pieces. If you have individual questions, I'm very happy to answer them. But all of the same things apply, just the other buildings don't do the participation things on the back, because those are not the same.
Yeah, I would like to see high school slides.
Can you put me in which area?
Let's go page number two. Oh, you are not putting on the screen, okay.
Yeah, I think you've worked on it.
Yeah. Page number one.
This is two.
Yeah, please bring it to one. See, it says, once again, failed to meet expectation. We got one star, just like last year.
No, not like last year, that score is up by almost two points from last year. And it is point eight points away from a second star. Meets few expectations, not that we've measured, but we're very close.
Yeah, I was talking about that one star, it says failed to meet expectation, the same wording was last year too. And then we.
Do you have a question, or are you just going to point out some pieces? What's your pleasure?
Yeah, I would like to point out some pieces and then I will ask one question.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Where to next?
Yeah, page number two. Underneath, yeah, these numbers. So twenty twenty-five, ninety students are developing and hundred and fourteen are approaching. But hundred and five are proficient or meeting. Or twenty-four of them are very advanced in ELA. Those students are exceptionally good. So almost approximately two hundred students are behind in ELA in high school. Similarly, in mathematics, developing hundred and twenty-nine, approaching ninety-five, both together around two hundred and twenty-four, they are behind. And ninety-six of them proficient or meeting, exceptionally good. And advanced, it didn't show the number, maybe nothing. Yeah, I don't see a digit, let's say it is a zero.
It is not a zero, or it wouldn't be aligned.
Yeah, it must be something, you know? I tried to enlarge, but didn't work out with my computer.
You just do the math?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a math.
Yeah.
It's for slop.
Yeah, whatever left is they are very advanced.
Four percent.
Four percent are very advanced. Ninety-six are meeting, so mathematics, two hundred and twenty-four are behind. So my question is, when, when middle school eighth graders, middle schools eighth grader, middle school eighth graders meet the expectation, they did an excellent job, they went to high school. So the middle school student, eighth grader, not seventh, eighth grader went to high school.
I think, I think there's, there's an algorithm.
Then we finish his question, I'm sorry, I'm just starting over.
Yeah.
What's your question?
This is just my question, I mean, nothing very exciting. So the eighth grader went, they go to the high school.
Yes.
In the ninth grade, and twelfth grade graduated. So the eleventh graders went to a twelfth grade. So the twelfth grader don't take test. Only ninth, tenth, eleventh, three grades, they take DPI test, not the twelfth graders. But they did not perform good in high school. They did perform good in the middle school.
You recognize it's a different test, right? So Wisconsin Forward through eighth grade, and then it jumps up to the pre-ACT secure. So we go from what is meant to be a grade level test to what was originally designed to be a college entrance exam. So it's a different assessment from eighth grade to freshman year.
So this freshman is not a, this DPI test?
Well, it's the pre-ACT secure, DPI is using it, so I guess you can call it a DPI test if you want. But the Wisconsin Forward was created for the purpose of the Wisconsin Student Assessment System. So, pre-ACT secure was created as part of a college entrance assessment suite.
So the ninth grader were taking college entrance test? It's too early to take college entrance test in the ninth grade.
And there you go with more legislative advocacy.
They should have taken in eleventh grade. So this is a DPI test I'm reading. So they did a good job in a eighth grade in middle school. Went to ninth grade high school, they did not meet the expectation. So this is my concern. Now I have opportunity. I, I should be going, meeting with school officials, learning what is going on to help, give my opinion, what else I can do.
We have heard how, see about how you arrange a visit at school, so you're welcome to use it.
But you remember, two, two years ago, two years ago and six months. Two years, six months, a bad dog stopped me not to go into school. Ever since, I have never visited a school. And I was like, if you need help, did you reach out to the board members? He is a doctor, he's a PhD doctor, he's a big girl. Anybody, anybody reach out to him? This is our expertise. I mean, other board members have a different profession, but he's a bi-professional professor, he's a big girl. So similarly, I'm a bi-professional teacher, so I will be, I already met you, we talked about it. And with the help of time, we would like to give, I mean, I would like to give my opinion. Maybe we can make some difference out of our expertise. Thank you.
Can, can I just really quickly state that I don't think I'm any bigger gun than anybody on the school board? We have parents and grandparents and business owners and people who've grown up in this town, and they all bring experience I don't bring to this table. I don't think our credentials are what make us important to the contribution to the school board. I have a PhD, which means I'm really good at being ticked off at these numbers, which is true. But, but I don't think I have anything more important to say than anybody else on the school board at all regarding this.
Every once in a while, when I want to get worked up in a lather again about these report cards, I might just give you a call just so that I can really get fired up like to them again.
All right, anything further on this?
We need to come up with some policies around attendance. And I'm not saying that sarcastically or facetiously, or any of the things in what ways can we hold parents accountable for their children's attendance.
It's a life skill and a job skill too, that.
We talk about durable skills.
You know, it's not just a school skill, it's something they're going to carry on throughout their life, so showing up is a good start.
But it does, this attendance number is not just a school district issue. I mean, we had folks here from the economic development board. This is an economic development board.
It's a joint board inside the life scale.
Yeah, I mean, and, and, and yeah, you, you have to hire people. I mean.
I mean, you, you have people that you hire that don't show up, that don't really care. They're not, they're going to be dependents of this community, not assets. That's, that's not what we want.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter really what they score, if they're a total dependent of this community, not an asset in any way, shape, or form, that's sad.
Last year at the state conference, they, they, they had like one kind of initiative that they focused on. And so when we did the all call, they, there was an agency that went across the country and actually all over Canada, and they were collecting data about different research that, or projects that were being done around attendance. So we, we each got to fill it out and like contribute to the database. I think before we start like jumping into policy, it would be who of us to like go through those and figure out, okay, which ones are working and why, and, and find meetings that have made, have like demographics, to see if we can kind of unpack that.
That's going to be really challenging, so I just did a sort of our, just our poverty rates. And of the four hundred and twenty-one school districts, we are like, what did I say, like we're number forty, you know, of that for highest rate. And then when you sort us by Native American population, there are only fifteen districts in the state that have higher than a ten percent Native American population. We are unicorn a little bit with our demographics as they are, which brings so much value and makes some of that comparison really challenging. We have taken the list of Native American communities that we serve, or communities who serve higher than ten percent Native American population and done the sorting. And we've called them many years in a row, that's what started our talking circles that we have at school. That's what the attendance interviews that we just did with our high school students came from. Conversation with another district who serves a high Native American population. And so it's a complex problem for sure. And I, I agree one hundred percent, we don't just randomly throw things at the wall and see what sticks. But I also think that attendance is one of those things that is incredibly community-specific. And I think that our county's willingness to partner with us is going to matter a lot as well. While we can dangle all the carrots we can possibly think of, there's going to be people that need a stick as well. And so what does that possibly look like, and what can we make happen? I think it's got to be both sides of that coin, so.
Like, again, how does the economically disadvantaged, what does that weigh into the score?
So the, when you look at that pie at the beginning of the score, between the beginning, percentage of any, whatever you have up this time.
Seems like.
There you go. So, there we are. So economically disadvantaged, they figure out this pie rate here changes based on what percentage of your population is economically disadvantaged or not. So this is which building?
Grade.
High school.
High school. And so the high school has a lower free and reduced rate, and so sixteen percent is on achievement and thirty-seven on growth. This is the one building that probably could have used a little bit more on, on growth than on, or on it, yeah, on growth and achievement, so. And so they have a formula that they're not just reporting, you can see our achievement scores, and, but this is not a direct reflection of achievement. It is also, they weight a free and reduced student heavier on growth based off of that pie.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, economically disadvantaged.
Yeah. And so what percentage of your overall score is from the achievement scores, the raw achievement scores versus the growth depends heavily on what your demographics are. So there are some districts that their growth weighs like four percent because they have a really low free and reduced rate, they are extremely not diverse. And so their achievement piece of the pie is like sixty percent or.
Achiever.
Correct.
And the Thomas School did better than us, they have a good diversity, good also. I saw their score earlier.
They're all online.
Yeah, they did little bit better than us. We will do good, hold on to it. I am.
Would you like to talk to Alex again about the calculation?
Well, 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 so, so there's, there's something more going on here.
I was poking, that was rude of me, I'm sorry.
No, I like you. That sounds bizarre. The middle school has the highest economically disadvantaged rate we've got. They're only nine point three percent on achievement, and they just crushed it. They're a three-star school, they just knocking everything out of the park. Is there?
It's growth.
It's, well, it's not just in growth, it's in all sorts of categories on there.
So do you have the middle school up, or which do you have? I want you to take a look at the value-added scores for the middle school.
We've been focusing on early childhood education and early reading programs. Is this the dividends of that starting to pay off as we get students who have had more early interventions and early investments supporting their way up at the middle school?
I don't know that it's been long enough with our science of reading that we're feeling all of that at the middle school. Certainly, there was fifth graders when we started leaning more into the science of reading, so some of that impact would be felt there.
The current seventh graders, we've got CKLA in first grade.
Oh, gosh.
Oh.
Man, that's been a lot longer than I thought.
Yeah, so this is, what we are seeing potentially, and this doesn't help you if you're already in high school and you went through COVID in middle school and, or elementary school and you're working through that. But it seems like the middle school is not, I'm not just saying, I'm not to dismerch middle school educators, but they are benefiting from the investments you're making. And the way to bring the high school scores up, much like the way to improve the high school football team or anything else, is to improve the middle school scores and the middle school football team. And to keep investing earlier in the process. And I think the middle school numbers are really encouraging. And the fact that you can go, and Ifikar pointed this out, you go from eighth grade, and they're crushing it on these numbers, to ninth grade, and they're in the gutter on these numbers, is not because of some deficit between the middle and the, it's because of this stupid algorithm. That being said, I do think the way to bring all this up, including attendance, is not to necessarily chase around the high schoolers more. It's to keep this cultural push going through elementary and middle school.
So the student success coordinator.
You look all smug in your elementary school.
The student success coordinator that was added this year, just sort of both secondary, has had recent conversations with all the admin up there that she feels her time is best spent with middle school kids trying to change their behavior as opposed to the high school students whose behaviors have been more deeply ingrained in their lack of attendance. And so she's splitting her time between both, but, so, well pointed out, I guess. I did want to highlight, this is what, closer to what one of these charts is supposed to look like, right? This is the value added for ELA at the middle school this past year.
This is a neat one, proficient last year made growth.
Right, right, and so when people say, well, you're just pushing your bottom kids, nope. The kids that were proficient last year made more than an average year's value added this past year. Our students with disabilities, not, I hear the English proficient. Economically disadvantaged also made more than average year's value added. So anyway, just wanted to make those out.
Yes. Unfortunately, this eighth graders are going in the ninth grade and suddenly they are not doing good in the high school. Is this test, is a time pressure test?
Yes.
Is it possible if our student get more time?
Only if they have an IEP that requires it.
Otherwise, no.
No.
Because we are economically disadvantaged, economically disadvantaged. Sometimes students need more time to comprehend the problem before they pitch in an answer.
It's called a standardized test. And so a standardized test has standard test giving procedures that we have to comply with.
Only IEP student has an option for.
If it's written into their IEP that they get accommodation. So before any of the testing window, Melanie and Nicole go through every student's IEP, and they have to enter in every single student and the accommodations that are listed in their IEP. So that when that student sits down to their computer for that assessment, the assessment knows this is a student with an IEP and these are the accommodations that they get.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything further on this stuff? Big guy stuff?
Monthly expenditure.
That's for moving on, right, so.
Operation record.
Eight point one, monthly expenditures.
All right, so the official expenditures were in your packet, this was added on Friday. This is an abbreviation of what you look at in those expenditures. I didn't realize that it was so blurry, but maybe it's not too bad. So we got a comparison here, year over year of the last three years on spending in our fund ten. And then you can see the breakdowns of where it's spent in comparison to the original budget. A couple of things worth noting, salaries, right, right at about. Twenty six percent of what we uh planned for for the year, which is good, uh so it's for July, August, September and October, four months in. Um so, you know, one third of the year, you would think thirty three percent, however, salaries um are often, some people choose to have their salaries paid out, you know, lump sum on June thirtieth. And so we have to account for that. Capital objects, so uh the five hundreds, that's where we buy our bus from, our each year. And then this year we had a ranger that went out and so we had to purchase a new one, fix it up the old one and we'll sell that one in resale. And then we have some bus repairs, so that's why that one's a little bit over budget right now, in addition, um yeah, that's correct.
I make a motion to approve.
One second.
All in favor of.
Aye.
Monthly expenditures, right?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nobody opposed.
You got a pass, so no. All right, nine point two.
I just wanted to provide you with the background information from our discussion during this special meeting. Um I don't need any discussion unless you have questions, again, I just wanted to provide you with the information that we received from them. Uh their proposed timeline, all of those things, right now Brandon and I are planning to meet with them the first week in December to take our first blush at that survey that we will share with you.
Who's all, who's part of the core team show?
Uh right now, that would be Brandon and I.
Just the two of you.
Yep, and then we would engage with the um admin team and the board as appropriate.
This is cool, thanks very good.
Yeah.
So right now, you're on schedule with timeline.
Okay, um just moving on then to ten point one, meetings.
Can I ask a question actually? What is the climate at Wasbo about referendum right now?
Wasbo, uh they think it's an unnecessary evil, nobody gets excited about it and everyone feels beholden to it. I I I'm gonna repeat what I said at our special meeting, one of the most significant challenges about funding things within your district with referendum funds is. That begins a cycle then that you either have to maintain or the state funding formula has to significantly change or you make some significant reduction somehow to get out of that cycle.
When I go to the law school means the constant conversation is, oh, are you going to referendum this year? Uh no, we're not till next year or it's just a constant conversation.
By design.
Except for us eighteen percent who've never done it.
Yes.
Okay, any more to show? Guess I'll move to approve the meeting minutes, last one, second. All in favor, check five Aye.
Aye, aye.
All right, all opposed?
Nobody opposed.
All right, motion passes, meeting minutes, um district administrators report.
I just have two quick things, this week is American Education Week, um lots of uh celebration, Malanabas celebrations, some fun treats planned for each of the buildings, which is always nice. Tomorrow is the Retired Educators Breakfast and we had twenty three retirees RSVP that they coming up to the high school, they're gonna listen to. Um our Fall's History Project student give an update on the work that she's doing and um it's always just fun to bring those people back together and. Sometimes they like to listen to the presentation, most of the time they like to visit with each other because they haven't seen those people in a long time, so that's happening tomorrow morning if you're available at the high school. Um I received an email today that the Impact Aid Office is open again and they are thinking we might get some money this year, which would be fantastic.
What what time was that tomorrow morning?
Uh it begins at eight thirty at the high school and right in the comments area. Um Impact Aid, uh they just said that we are six weeks behind on emails, we will get to as quickly as we can. We understand some of you are used to reimbursements already happening by now, we have not, last year we didn't get uh Impact Aid reimbursement until like December or January, so. It is always sporadic when we get it, so it hasn't been significantly detrimental to us yet. Um with our lower fund balance, it would be great if we got some for January, um December or January, but um it's not gonna make or break us, we're just glad that they are open again and talking to us immediately about. The possibility that 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 payment would happen, so that is all that I have.
Okay, uh ten point four, conference workshop attendance.
We already did that.
Covered.
Yeah.
Covered, okay. Uh ten five, school board cock shop turn. Tomorrow, tomorrow at eight thirty.
Future agenda item.
All right, let's talk about the future agenda item.
I have property potential use in twenty years, school forest, can we sell it? If we can sell it, we want conversation from the staff that use it, their thoughts, wants, photographs, um all the feelings about the school forest. I'm gonna send out to you uh the attendance comparison at this point in time from previous years and what is the economically disadvantaged. Average um attendance statewide, those are two that I'm just reporting out to you.
And and one and one more uh about how much loan we have to pay off.
It is referendum debt and that is a quick report that Brandon can print and send you.
Uh we have never borrowed money for Red Creek or something.
So you just saw it, that is the referendum debt, you just saw it at the annual meeting, there was the fund thirty nine that was referendum debt and what was the pool project?
Fund thirty eight.
Thirty eight was the pool project, so you just saw it's under a million dollars for the pool project and then we we could go back in our annual meeting booklet and give you that.
No, 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 I got it, I got it.
Okay.
Um the legislative committee.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And training.
Yep.
For Brandon.
I think uh so attendance and we we talked about it last year, uh with some of the past board members really didn't act. As a board to add any teeth, add add the stick that Shelley's talked about. Now I feel we need to revisit the attendance policy, um I feel that we need to add some teeth.
Could we get some recommendations about what teeth we can legally add?
Yes.
I mean, what do you mean legally add?
Well, I don't know what we can do and what we can't do. I I think Shelley would.
We can set policy, right?
You can.
So.
And I think your question is what's enforceable and what's not enforceable is what I think is getting at, yep, I understand.
But I feel it needs a change, like. So I'd like to see it on a future attendance, I gotta say, I'd like to see it on a future agenda, I don't know whether it happens next month or sometime in the future, if we revisit it again and. I'd like to encourage. All the board members to try to act, make a change. Because what we're doing isn't working.
On that school forest issue, it would be nice to see a report on its utilization, like is it underutilized, are there opportunities to use it more? Because if it is underutilized, we should utilize it more or consider not do it so.
If county is willing to buy on the first place.
It's a big if.
If I was reading a report, it is not the county's proposal on the first place.
The county does not want to buy it.
No.
Because then it would still be governmental owned.
They're trying to get it privately owned so that they can tax it.
Oh, for the taxation.
Yeah, they want tax rep.
They want.
Is it possible, so he was talking about uh doings with like um like.
D land.
The footprint, um.
Leaf.
Not leaf, ah never mind, it's too late.
The convergence is over.
Well, there is other opportunities to use county or state land to do the same thing. Or like there is a little one that. Kind of do, you know, so I mean, it's not the only option too. Like no kids going to the forest ever again, you know, and stuff like that, there's still other opportunities, potentially, you know.
Uh carbon credits, sorry, I, carbon credits, that's what they were talking about logging and and they're selling carbon credits to then pay for other things, so. Is there opportunities that would be similar or like for that we could not, maybe not the like five thousand lot thing, but the forest maybe?
I don't know anything about carbon credits, but I will learn between now and December or whatever meeting is.
There's a lot of different stuff for carbon credits.
The the leaf program that he referenced is specifically designed to help schools leverage.
The leaf program right now is run, I can't remember her married name, but by.
A doctor.
Yeah, I was just gonna say her maiden name was Cirque, her first name was Gretchen, she was our high school teacher and then she moved from here to um. Uh U W Stevens Point to develop that program, so she is.
So she knows what we can do.
She's very familiar, she knows what we did, I mean it when I say it sometimes depends on the areas of passion for each individual teacher, right? So we hired a new science teacher and let's say they're really into, I don't know, whatever it may be, and the school forest might not be the best vehicle to get at that area, right? So I'm just saying that um.
But I meant in terms of credits, like like wetland credits or carbon credits or or any of that sort of thing.
Oh, oh, the carbon credits, got it, got it.
Part of it is supposed to be teaching sustainable forestry and making use of forest resources and stuff like that, if that forest resource could be. Some sort of credit, that would be, that would be a revenue source.
And it's gonna be like.
I'll learn, I promise, I'll be ready.
All right, I think we're up to to the last.
Can I, can I move to adjourn?
Yes.
I've never got it before.
I could go for it. You should have done it a year ago.
All in favor of adjournment, if I say aye, opposed?
Nobody opposed.
We're officially adjourned.
Snuck that in.